A city update from Mr. Brian McCain, Chief of Staff.
Thank you, ma'am. City update. Applications for a city resident to serve a five-year term on the Board of Health are due on Tuesday, May 28th by 8:00 a.m. So we're encouraging people to submit that. The cleanup event this Saturday, past Saturday, we had 112 roll-off dumpsters filled, which was 23% more than the event in October. About 400 tires collected, which was about 60% more than October's, and 1,800 loads received, which is about 50% more than October, and that includes vouchers that were given out when the lines were cut off. So it was a lot. That was for both sites combined. We will be getting the tonnage data within the next few days. Public Transit is launching two new routes on June 3rd to expand service areas and shorten commute times. These two new routes are the North Shopping and South Shopping Routes, which will take place, take the place of the Bessemer 2 and the Berkeley-Bula 2 routes, which are currently available. Public Transit is hosting three town halls to help current or new riders understand the changes taking place on June 3rd and how this can improve their commutes. The two new routes will offer transfer points for more efficient riding experiences to get individuals to doctor's appointments, shopping, and other daily activities while cutting down on wait times. The first town hall was actually today from 3:30 at the Rawlings Library. The next one is Friday, May 24th, from 12:00 to 12:30 at the Lucero Library in the Large Community Room. And then Wednesday, May 29th, from 5:00 to 5:30 p.m. at the Rawlings Library in the Brett Kelly Room B. Again, the opening weekend at City Park starts this Saturday and goes through Monday. Pool's open from 12:00 to 2:30 and 3:00 to 5:30, and the rides open at 5:00 and close at 9:00. And the paving operation will continue on Northern through June 12th. And that concludes my update.
Thank you. Anything from Council?
One comment. We're being so successful with these cleanups that the only complaint you get is how long it takes to get into the facility. And we're talking like two, two and a half hours, maybe some people said three. So, you know, but they stuck it out. So I guess it's a success, but.
Yes, Counselor Martinez?
I was there with Mayor Graham the whole day on Saturday at the state fairgrounds doing the cleanup. And I can't, I mean, it's every, almost all cars that I approached were so thankful for the cleanup. And literally, we're like, well, when's the next one? And I think that it just shows how important and how impactful these community cleanups are. I know that it's a lot of staff time the day of. I know it's a lot of staff time to plan, but they certainly are impactful. There, to Counselor Flores's part, we, there were some lessons learned from this one that I think we'll implement in October to hopefully shemine it a little bit more. For example, walkie-talkies was, is going to be a necessity moving forward. But just great job, staff, literally.
Okay. Well, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Gomez?
Yeah, I'm just curious. I had talked to Joe about the issues with the food desert, but are there any plans in reference to transit ideas to get those folks from the east side to maybe the Supers and Safeway so they have a way to shop?
I can get back to you on that. I don't know off the top of my head, but I'll find out for you and connect with you this week.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Gomez. Yeah, something that we talked about and it would really be something that would be very much well-received on that side of town.
And I'll get back with you too, Counselor.
Counselor.
To answer that, in PCOG, we have the presentation on the new routes. And it does exactly what you guys are concerned about because it's been a concern for so many years that these new routes do connect your neighborhoods with the shopping. And I know that there, is it up on the website, the two new routes? Yeah. So I believe if you look on the website, the city website, that they have the two new routes posted. And then if you have any questions about it, we have PCOG on Thursday and they'll be there.
All right, anyone else? Okay, so our next presentation is by UC Health at Parkview Hospital, and our guest tonight is Darren Smith, President. Yes, go ahead and approach there.
This is a first, so you need to raise your right hand. What I'm about to tell you is the truth. So first of all, thank you.
Got it. All right. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to come to tonight's work session. And the whole purpose of tonight is really to give Council a understanding of where we're at with the integration within the partnership with UC Health. As I think all of you know, on December 1st of 2023, Parkview became part of the UC Health system, which I think is very critical and very important for the future of healthcare in Pueblo, but not just Pueblo, but in Southern Colorado. So tonight I wanted, wanted to give you guys an overview of where we're at and how we got there as well, because I think it's important to understand how we got to this point as well. So in regards to the, the slide deck that I was, gave to all of you, I'm going to talk a little bit about the hospital situation, financial challenges in the state of Colorado, Parkview's continued commitment in our, in our community, and then where we're at from an integration side of it. And then open it up for any questions that, that any of you may have for me. But when you look at, at slide three, if, if you want to. Got it. All right. Oops. All right. So in terms of slide three, when you look at Colorado, the, the situation in hospitals in the state of Colorado right now, 50% of the hospitals in the state of Colorado have unsustainable financial models. And Parkview, UC Health, Parkview is no different. And that's, and that's what's really led us to the partnership that we now have with, with UC Health. We all know since the pandemic, the cost of doing business has increased dramatically in every industry sector, everything that we do. And because of those economic challenges, we as a hospital had to make the decision of, you know, what direction that we go and, and how do we go about doing that? And when you look at the demographics for a hospital, this has been like this for decades, over 80% of our patients are government payers, meaning they're medic, other on Medicaid or Medicare. And when you look at the cost structure that we have, the cost of, of doing or running our hospital is exponentially grown. Where the reimbursement for both of those entities, both Medicare and Medicaid, doesn't keep up with that to cover our cost. And so when you look at where we've been over the last few years, if I go to FY '22, our fiscal year runs July through June. FY '22, we'd lost $34 million to hospital operation-wise. The following year in FY '23, we lost about $22 million. And this year in our fiscal year that we budgeted, we budgeted to lose about $35 million. And so knowing that trajectory, that's what caused us or had us go to UC Health. We actually reached out to UC Health to ask them to be a part of the system. I know a lot of people think when you look at America today, a lot of systems go and they look to add hospitals, which is true. In this case, we actually went to them because when you look at, that financial model, there was no way we had sustainability in the years to come. And if we didn't find a partner, we would be faced with what I call catastrophic healthcare decisions for our community. And that's not a direction that Parkview wanted to go, our board, et cetera. And so we ultimately reached out to UC Health in 2022 and asked them if they would be interested in, in having us as the next hospital in their system, which they graciously said yes to. And fast forward to December of last year, we made, we made that partnership finalized. And so you can see in the economics, our cash, you know, dwindled greatly over a couple of years from the pandemic, and that's where we're at today. I will say this in terms of the investment that, that UC Health has made to us, they've committed, you know, approximately $200 million in capital over the next 10 years. And what I look at that from a capital perspective, it's not about adding any additional infrastructure. We have capacity in our hospital today in terms of floors that we don't even have open today. We have not opened up since the pandemic. Pueblo West, as you know, we opened that hospital out there about a year and a half ago, and we have some capacity out there. So from a capital investment, those dollars are really about keeping our facilities modern, keeping our technology in the forefront, replacing equipment, et cetera. And so I'm excited about where that, that investment will be and where it's going to go in the next 10 years in terms of healthcare. I think the one thing that, if there's anything I can share with you, when I look at the partnership, our goal is, is as Parkview and UC Health as a system, is to keep patients in Southern Colorado. When you look at this partnership, we didn't join their system and nor did they have us join our system to say, let's take people out of Pueblo or Southern Colorado and have them go to Colorado Springs or Denver for care. The intent of this partnership is to keep people in our own community and provide the services. And yes, there are some services that we do, do not provide and we will not be able to provide. So people will have to go north for those, but our whole goal is to continue what we have here and build on what we have. Because when you look at UC Health as a system and all the different hospitals that they have brought into their system, and we are now hospitals number 13 and 14, we count ourselves as two. Every one of those locations they've went into, they've grown. So I know people, when you see something like this, you get concerned to say, is that going to mean we're going to reduce jobs, cut jobs, et cetera? We have not eliminated jobs at Parkview. Matter of fact, people have had opportunities. Some people's jobs have changed the scope, but we have not had a reduction enforced in terms of this, this partnership that we had, or we have with, with UC Health. So today, from a community benefit perspective, we will continue to do what we've done in terms of a community benefit. Last year, we had about $137 million in community benefit. The majority of that, of course, is for uncompensated care, people that can't pay Medicaid, et cetera. But we also have a lot of programs, and I'll talk, I'll touch base a little bit about some of the programs that we're doing in our community, and we'll look to continue to do as a part of this partnership. In the last year, we've served over 63,000 Medicare and Medicaid patients. We're very similar. A lot of people sometimes equate to us as the Denver Health of the south. As we all know, Denver Health and some of the challenges they have in the population that they serve, we, we serve some of that same population and have some of the same challenges in terms of our system. But overall, our commitment stays the same. We will continue to take care of our patients in Southern Colorado, regardless of their ability to pay. That's something that we've done for 100 years. March of '23, we, we were 100 years old as a hospital, and we will continue to do that well into the future. So I feel very good about the direction that we're going as a hospital, as a part of, of the system that we're, we're a part of today. I talked a little bit about this right here. One of the big things that did happen on April 1st, we transitioned all of our staff over to UC Health payroll and their benefits, which has been a very favorable thing in terms of what they're able to offer for their staff. UC Health now has roughly 33,000 employees in the state of Colorado. We're a part of that, and we're happy to be a part of that. There's been a lot of positives with, with that change, transition in terms of being on their benefit structure, things that we couldn't offer due to our size and the economics of our, our hospital operational model. The other thing that we have as a part of the, the integration, we have what we call a dock line. So this is where, if there's a, a patient that needs to be admitted to the hospital, let's just say from a rural area, let's just say it's from Lahana. There is a centralized number that Lahana would call, and they would say, hey, here's the patient that we have, here's the condition they're in, here's what we need for services. And it's a, it's a centralized number, and so UC Health will then look to place that person where there's capacity and where there's services to provide that. And ultimately, going back to what I said earlier, this dock line will help us, I believe, keep patients in Southern Colorado because we know there's, there's been patients going to Memorial, and understandably so. But with a dock line, we're, we're able to look at our hospital first and see if we have the ability, if we have a bed, we have the services based on the condition, and we'll keep him, keep those individuals right here in Southern Colorado. This is a big win, in my opinion, in terms of what we're able to do. Because if there's not capacity, we're able to find a bed within the UCL system for that person as well, whether that's in Colorado Springs, and if it's needed, up to Denver. As the employer, we're about 2,800 employees. We have a payroll of about 200, just under $250 million. And that's, you know, that is strong and going forward in terms of our staff. And I, I hope that in time we're able to even grow based on what, what I've seen in other locations for UC Health as a system. From a community benefit perspective, here's just a couple of things that, that we've done over the years, and we've done these for, for numerous years. We have what we call our mobile nurses. You may have heard of them, seen them, met them, et cetera, but we have a group of nurses that'll go out into our community, to businesses, they're at the library, et cetera, doing blood pressure checks, you name it, for our citizens of our community, and hopefully giving them the tools and resources if they need healthcare to help direct them. And that's at no cost to, to any individual in our community. So they're out there. We've had this group of individuals for a number of years, and that's something we'll continue to do. We also have what we call our STEP program. It's Student to Employment. It's through District 70. This program's been in existence for over 15 years. And it's, it's targeted around high school seniors within District 70. So Pueblo West, Pueblo County, Rye High School, students that are going into their senior year can apply to actually shadow our staff in a clinical setting. And the whole point of this is to try to get these seniors that potentially are interested in a clinical career to actually come and watch our staff do what they do. So you may have somebody that shadows a nurse, a respiratory therapist, somebody in our lab. The, we've also expanded that to our maintenance, our facilities for people that may have an interest in that. So they actually spend a semester in our, in our, in our hospital, shadowing these people four days a week. They actually get college, our high school credit for that. And at the end of the program, they get to do a narrative. And the great thing is, is we have had hundreds of kids that have went through this. 25% of them have, at some point in time, if not right now, working for Parkview. And that's part of our whole plan and program is, how do we get our high school students aware of careers in healthcare and to get them exposed to that? On the other side of it, if somebody goes and shadows a nurse and they realize that is not what I want to do, that's not a bad thing as well, because our whole goal is to see the careers that we have. And if that's not what somebody has a passion for, then stop right there. So they don't go to school, spend X amount of years going to school, and they come out and they say, why did I become a nurse? And we've had a few students that, you know, based on their shadowing opportunities, have had that takeaway, which I think is just as important as others that have come through this program and said, hey, that's really what I want to do in my life. And we have a number of them that are working at Parkview today. The other thing that we have is, is two really good partnerships with the, with the local colleges, with CSU Pueblo, as well as PCC. We give about a half million dollars a year to the respective programs, their clinical programs, to help build that. How do we get more nurses through these programs, expand the nursing programs, respiratory therapy at PCC, et cetera, because we know that's our pipeline. We've got to build our own, because the unfortunate reality, we are still, if you told me you had 100 nurses right now that, that were available, wanted to come up Parkview, we could hire all 100 of them today. That's, we're still in that situation. And that's why earlier what I said, we've got two patient floors that we still have not opened beds because we don't have the staff to be able to do that. We can still serve our community, we are. But I'd love to be able to get to that point someday where we have the volume and the need to open that up, but we need the staff to do that. So these relationships with the local schools is very important to build our, our, our pipeline of future people to work at, at UC Health Parkview. The next thing is something that I don't know if, if many of you have seen this recently, but UC Health has a, what they call a next chapter. It's for veterans, and it has a focus around veterans and helping them hopefully not to take their life. It's around suicide prevention and giving them the tools and resources. This is something, just last week, I had a chance to meet the individual that's leading up the program within UC Health. They were recently here out at Roseland to identify the veterans out at the Roseland Cemetery. And I'm, I'm really excited about this program and where this is going. I don't have a lot of detail for tonight, but I'm just going to tell you, this is something that I look forward to having our hospital, our staff involved with in terms of providing resources for our veterans in our community when it comes to this area of mental health. Some of the other things that we'll continue to do as, as a part of this partnership, we'll have a virtual health center. We've got the app. Some of you may have the Parkview Patient App today. We'll be transitioning over that to their app here the first week in June, and that'll be a nice smooth transition. We'll have a virtual assistant, assist, virtual assistant that will be available. And more importantly, we'll continue to have a model of care that we can provide for, for Southern Colorado. So at this time, I'll open it up. I just wanted to, to give all of you an update of where we're at, how we got there. We have had made, made some tough decisions. One thing that I did, you know, when we go back and look at our financials, unfortunately, back in 2020, we had to make the decision to, to no longer offer inpatient behavioral health services in our community. That was not an easy decision. But it was financially, at that point in time, we were trying to figure out how we can continue to be independent, maintain our, our status. And we were losing, you know, anywhere from a million to $2 million a year with that service line. And so as hard as that was, because it's something that we've had for years, we did make the decision to cut that back in 2020. But I will say this, UC Health as a system does have those services. They have inpatient services up north. I don't know if there'll be a day that we will have that back here in Pueblo. At this point in time, it's not, not something that we have talked about. But that is something that we did a few years ago. So with that, I'll open it up to all of you, any questions that you may have for me, and I appreciate the, the time.
Counselor Flores.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Darren. That was a great overview. Appreciate it. I know at one time you had a central psychiatric ward, and you dealt with mental health. And I noticed that there's a logo here, Colorado Behavioral Health Admin. And then now you're dealing with suicide prevention. Have you gone maybe halfway back into mental health, or are you, or is this, is this a service that's really done through another hospital within the state?
So Counselor Flores, so we still have outpatient psychiatric behavioral health services for our community. So we have, we have a, a couple of psychiatrists that, that people in our community can see. So the next chapter is a resource that, that has not been brought here, but it's, that's exactly where that's going in terms of providing those additional mental health resources. I don't know if they will be right in our, right here in our backyard. That's something that's more to come in terms of what, how that evolves, but that will continue to build in terms of what we have. But our outpatient services are still available for people in our community.
With the association, you know, with UC Health, did we, do we still have a foundation here in Pueblo, the old Parkview Foundation, does that still exist?
We do. We still have, we still have our foundation. It's now called UC Health Parkview Foundation. In part of the whole partnership, UC Health did give a $5 million donation to our foundation. And so we will continue to have our foundation and operate and raise money. We just had a big event, our annual golf tournament that we had just about two weeks ago. And everything that we raise and that goes to scholarships for IER staff, as well as people in our community to go back and pursue healthcare careers. So our foundation will continue to do that. We'll have our annual gala in the fall and raise money to, you know, give back to our community and have those dollars that, you know, the $5 million that are in there. If we can use those dollars to improve what we're doing in the hospital, we will use those accordingly. But yes, that foundation still exists and will continue to exist.
And then my last question has to do with the integration of doctors becoming employees of, of UC Health now. How many doctors are employed by UC Health now through that network?
Well, in terms of the entire system?
Not, not.
That's the system just here. At Parkview, we have, we have about 100 here in terms of total providers. That's, that's physicians as well as nurse practitioners, PAs, et cetera. All of those individuals will continue to be employed through UC Health. And so they, they will be here as long as they want to be here, Counselor Flores, in terms of where we're going. So there's nothing, in terms of this partnership, their jobs, what they do, will continue to be here in, in, in our community. And I hope we can continue to have all of them. We're in the process right now of renewing a number of the physician contracts that come due here this year. And right now, everyone that we have talked to plans to continue to be in our community and provide services in their respective field of medicine.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Gomez?
Is, one of the things I realize is the emergency cost, emergency room cost in particular. Are there any ways to legally weed that down where you'll be able to compensate for a lot of the costs that are probably driving you guys crazy? Is, is there anything out there that's going to handle that at all?
Not that I'm aware of, Counselor Gomez. I mean, when you look at our emergency room, just to give you a perspective, we, we have about 76,000 ER visits a year between our main hospital and Pueblo West. That's what we see in our ERs every year here in Pueblo.
And one more question. Are you guys utilizing to the full extent this telehealth vehicle that's out there now?
We are. We, we still, you know, as the pandemic really, to me, opened the doors with telehealth, we continue to use that. Not as much as we did, of course, during the pandemic, because I think our physicians prefer to see our patients face-to-face. But where we have the opportunity to have telehealth, we will continue to do that. And I really believe when you look into the future of healthcare, I think this will continue to involve, evolve, and you'll see even more of the telehealth or the virtual health into the homes in terms of people being able to go home sooner, or maybe not even having to stay in the hospital, but we'll be able to, to monitor them remotely, depending on their condition. So I think this is an area that's going to just continue to get more traction and build as we look at healthcare into the future.
Thank you.
Counselor Latino.
Darren, the Pueblo West emergency room. This is a plus. I'm very impressed with that because I've been there a number of times with, with family and friends. And I think, I think you're doing a great job with that, and so is your staff. And I think you need the kudos for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Latino. I, I, I appreciate that. That goes out to our staff. We have, we have an absolutely wonderful staff, and, you know, from physicians to our, our, our support staff, our nurses, et cetera, the entire staff. It takes all of us to, as you know, provide great care. And that's, I appreciate the comments, and, and that's to all of them, and, and thank you.
Yeah, please let them know that. Thank you.
Counselor Martinez?
I'm curious, Darren, if you can talk a little bit about what the busiest department you have in Parkview system? Because I just did rough math, and it, so for the ER, it'd be like 211 visits a day. But is that the busiest department?
Yes, and your math is spot on. That's our average visits per day. We typically see about 130 patients in our main ER and about 80 patients out in Pueblo West on the day. Yes, by far the most, that's the busiest area of our hospital.
Is that the one that also has the most staff and then like budgetary resources then as well?
Yes.
Okay. Interesting.
Yeah.
When you're thinking, when you're, when you and your team are thinking about retaining physicians or recruiting physicians, what would you say is the biggest barrier for recruiting physicians and having them stay here?
You know, I, I've heard a lot of perspectives on this. You know, I, I think, you know, as physicians, as we try to bring new physicians into our community, I think it's got a lot of variables. I think they read the headlines, they look at crime, of course, in our community and try to get a sense of, you know, what are, what are crimes like? They look at the school systems, how, how they view the school systems, you know, and, and that varies from doctor to doctor in terms of where, you know, from an educational perspective. I think from a social perspective, they look at, okay, what do we have in our community, how close are things? I would say the first two are probably the biggest elements that we face when we, when we're out recruiting docs. But I will say this, you know, we, we, we do have success. Have we lost physicians because of those elements? Yes, that is, that's accurate as well. But I think it's part of, of our staff, when we bring somebody in, is how we can identify and speak to those respective areas in terms of our educational system here in our community, as well as crime in terms of what we're doing, how we're doing, et cetera. Because you can read headlines. I mean, headlines are headlines, and you can spin them any way you want. But I think part of it is our, our responsibility as a hospital is to give that detail because we know those questions are going to come up. And typically, when a physician comes, their spouse is coming with them. And sometimes that spouse is probably more so the one to convince in terms of those elements versus, i.e. the doctor themselves.
Yeah, I, so if there's any, I guess, ways that we could collaborate there on positive messaging or crime statistics, I know that, you know, Mayor Graham's done a great job at trying to reduce a lot of those crime statistics, and you kind of push out that to the community. So I guess if there's any collaboration you see there, it, it, we, I guess we'd love to help with that.
I appreciate that. I'll keep that in mind.
Yeah. And then I'm glad that you talked a little bit about the psych unit. You know, I think that particularly for young people, right now, it's such a gap for no inpatient treatment for, you know, three, either 38-hour or three-day holds or 72-hour holds for young people. So I'm glad to hear that at least it's on your radar and your leadership team's radar.
Right. And we, we also have, we have worked with Health Solutions now in terms of having a staff member in our ER to help with facilitating follow-up. You know, if somebody comes into our ER, has a mental health issue of how we can get them an appointment, and they may not need to be inpatient, they may just have, we need to set them up with resources for outpatient side of it, whether we can do that or, or any other resources, but they also help us try to place people that do need inpatient treatment. So that is something that's fairly new, but I'm optimistic that that hopefully will continue. Uh, but I'm optimistic that that hopefully will continue to gain traction. As we know, we don't have our own inpatient center that uh, between the two of us, we can find placement, hopefully sooner than later in terms of holding somebody in our ED for days.
Yeah. Well, that's good to know. And then my last question is, I know that you guys have onsite childcare
Yes.
for employees, which I think is fantastic. It's, that's such a great benefit. Is UC Health going to continue that?
There's no plans to change it.
Great. Good.
Thank you.
Okay.
This is on a lighter note too. Cafe Perkview. Special, you know, the people there are special and um, I go there often.
Thank you.
So those folks need to know they're appreciated as well. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Well, if that's everything.
Can I say one, one, one last thing? I just want to, I don't know if the chief is around, Chief Knoller. Uh, a few weeks ago, we had a very um sensitive day in terms of the situation in our hospital. And I just want to acknowledge uh to Chief Knoller and his staff, they did an outstanding job. They actually assigned five officers inside of our hospital that day due to the nature of the situation. They had patrol outside of the hospital. Uh, unfortunately, healthcare, we've seen more and more violent type of stuff that takes place in healthcare today, more so than we ever have. And I just want to uh shout out and appreciate the chief for what you did a few weeks ago in terms of having your staff be there to protect our staff, because that's something that uh we greatly appreciated and uh it was well, uh, uh, well known throughout our hospital, what you guys and your staff did. So thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the time tonight.
Alrighty. Okay. So um, next on our agenda is um Colorado Legal Services with Gail Rodasovich. Good evening, Gail, and welcome.
Uh, Mayor Graham and councilors, thank you for inviting me here this evening. It's my pleasure to give you an update on the eviction diversion program for Pueblo County. Um, I am the coordinator of that eviction diversion program and I'm going to give you soon as I figure out how to work this. Okay. Tonight, I'm going to give you a little bit of a historical perspective on this program. Uh, some of the councilors were here when we started this in twenty twenty-two and some weren't. I'm going to tell you where we are today and I'm also going to give you a brief overview of the impact of this program on our community. Thank you. So what we know about eviction, we know that if a family is evicted, their chances of being homeless in a homeless shelter on the street increase exponentially. We also know that their job future and their future earnings, their wages are impacted. We know that it's major to the physical and mental health of, of the family that's being evicted. And what we found when we looked at these programs uh was the ability of children to perform in school. Uh, the children that were impacted by eviction in any way um were not performing at their level. And it was not only short term, but it was long term. We know that the effects of eviction are both uh short term and long term. We also know that it can be the defining factor for an individual and their family because of the impact on their future success. And the both the short term and the long term negative uh aspects of an eviction impact the community. We knew that there were many different agencies providing uh different parts of the eviction uh diversion. There were those that would counsel, those that were helping um establish different affordable housing. There were those that were providing rental assistance, but we knew it was a fragmented system. And we wanted to make sure that we could stabilize families and neighborhoods. Um, we had to give the financial incentive to landlords. Landlords want to be paid for their property. We knew that was important. We wanted to keep the tenants housed and we wanted to target the homeless prevention programs and to the people that needed us most. Our priority are families, of course, uh, those uh experiencing domestic violence. Um, there are also seniors on a fixed income, any person on a fixed income. Uh, those with mental health and physical um vulnerabilities and anybody with a disability. We also in the last couple of years have looked to veterans. We knew that we wanted a program uh if successful that we could tweak for Pueblo, that we didn't have to reinvent the wheel, that we could get up and running uh as quickly as possible. So we looked at Kalamazoo, Michigan. They had a five-year track record. They were a holistic wraparound service and I'll tell you more about that. We, they're onsite at the eviction uh dockets. That's important. We knew we had to be accessible to those who were getting evicted. We wanted to provide mediation so we could come to agreement, keep as many of uh those families out of the court system as we could. And we knew also that we had to provide rental assistance. When we talk about holistic wraparound services, all of these are important. But one of the most important aspects is to keep people out of court. Uh, the court system's intimidating. It's very difficult to navigate. Um, before we started this service, the majority of tenants didn't show up. Um, they didn't show up because they didn't think there was anything that could uh be done for them. They felt hopeless. And when they don't show up, uh, entry for judgment happens that day. Uh, the landlord can get the rid of eviction in forty-eight hours and then it's just a matter of days before the sheriff can act to actually evict that family based on the sheriff's schedule. So we knew that was really, really important and we knew we needed to coordinate access to community services. Uh, the eviction was the end result of what we were seeing, but there were many, many issues that got these families to the point of being evicted. So that was really important was that coordinated service. Um, the multiple stream of services that we wanted to include, of course, was rental assistance. We needed to make the landlord whole. And we wanted to keep the tenant in place as many times as we could. We uh found that before we were onsite, most tenants, I would say ninety-nine or more percent were not represented. So it was not a fair system. All the landlords were represented, the tenants were not. They didn't understand their rights. They didn't understand the system. Um, they didn't know when they had a defense and so they were evicted. So we knew we needed attorneys onsite. Again, the mediation services, we wanted to broker settlements when whenever we could. Um, that might mean uh buying more time for someone to move to more affordable housing. It might mean keeping them in place and getting their rent paid. It also um would mean most important is keeping that eviction off their record. Because when you have an eviction on your record, your chances of moving forward to other housing is minimal. Um, the financial services and social services was really important. We wanted to provide housing resources. We wanted to help the children involved. And we wanted to give resources to healthcare whenever we could. So we wanted to wrap around service. These are our measured outcomes and they're really important. Everyone's important in how we evaluate this program. Many times we're asked, well, how many of these people are still housed? Uh, that's important and that's part of it, but they may not be housed at the same address that they were in when they went to the eviction court. They may be housed in another address uh that's more affordable. They may be with family. Uh, they may have relocated outside of Pueblo to support units. Uh, all of that's important. We have to look at that. And one of the very important factors is if we can keep that eviction off their record to allow them to go forward. Because the eviction on their record, not only um marginalized housing, but also jobs. Um, it's on the credit report of job history. So that was really important for us to do too. We were lucky. In August of twenty twenty-one, we found out there was ARPA funding and we applied uh and were granted a three hundred thousand dollar grant for three years. And with that, we uh implemented the program, put a full-time attorney in place using ARPA funding. And we also put another full-time attorney in place for housing through eviction defense funding. We uh have a partnership with Colorado Legal Services, the Pueblo County Department of Human Services, who puts the navigator in place. And also of course, the city of Pueblo. We collaborated with our court, the Tenth J D, to make sure that we could have access to the court system. And then also with the access to Justice Committee for the Tenth J D. This is the vision. We want to enhance the integration of community service to prevent evictions and homelessness. And the two um go hand in hand. We piloted the program in March of twenty twenty-two. We had the funding in October, but it took us a while to put everything in place. So we did pilot in March of twenty twenty-two. We knew that we had to reach people and let them know that there was help. We needed to reach tenants who were being evicted and tell them, show up in court. Because if you don't show up in court, you're going to be evicted. We also needed to reach the landlords and the landlord attorneys uh to tell them, we understand your position as well. We want to make you whole as well as our tenants. We want to get you paid, but in order to do that, we need you to come to the table. So we got the information out to the court, to the service agencies. Um, we, to the rental associations in Pueblo, any place that we could get it out to so people knew uh that there was help available, this flyer went out. The program staffing, we have two full-time eviction defense attorneys. Um, I'm the coordinator for the program. We have a full-time rental assistance paralegal. And then of course, we have that DH navigator and who is so important that can really access community services, social services in real time and then mediators. We're onsite um in the court, um, next to the courtroom, actually in the courtroom at both of the eviction dockets in Pueblo County on Mondays and Thursdays with the eviction attorneys, myself, the rental paralegal and our navigator. It's very important to have the attorneys onsite because they can give advice um for those that we can't represent, but they will represent as many as we can. Uh, we're there to facilitate the agreements I talked about um and work out stipulations and agreements uh to keep people housed and also to keep the evictions off their record. And that DHS navigator who's onsite, we also supplement our staffing with pro bono attorneys and pro bono mediators. We have uh three, four sources of funding right now. So we have ERAP, which is the state funding. Uh, that's winding down. We understand there may be another program in the summer, but we're not sure what that's going to look like. The importance of the state uh funding is that's the only funding we have that will pay a set amount to the landlord attorneys. Uh, without paying the landlord attorneys, it's very difficult to get them to the table. So uh, ERAP will also not only pay uh past rent, they can go forward one month or two months. So that's helped stabilize the families. We're lucky to have the community service block grant. Uh, that's important money to us. Uh, we try to use that as much as we can for public housing uh clients because they don't owe as much rent. We can get to them before attorneys are involved. So it works really well. And then in March, we got the CDBG money, which we're really grateful for. Um, going forward, uh, this is the key to our real diversion uh program is the rental assistance for the parties. So this is what twenty twenty-two looked like. Um, we started in March and through the end of twenty twenty-two, we took four hundred and seventy-nine cases and we provided almost seven hundred eleven thousand dollars in rental assistance. In twenty twenty-three, there were one thousand seventy-four evictions filed in Pueblo County. This is what the first quarter of the program looked like. We took almost thirty-five percent of those evictions that showed up in court and we provided eighty thousand dollars in rental assistance. Moving on to the second quarter, we took about thirty-eight percent of the cases, a hundred of the two hundred and eighty-eight that were filed. And we provided a hundred and eighteen thousand plus in rental assistance. In the third quarter of twenty twenty-three, we increased, we took fifty-four percent of the total FEDs filed in Pueblo County and provided a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in rental assistance. In the fourth quarter, we provided almost forty-seven percent uh representation in those cases. And we provided five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in rental assistance for just the fourth quarter. This is what uh twenty twenty-three looked like, uh nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in rental assistance. You can see the majority of that was from ERAP, but the local funding was very, very important to this program. This is what it looks like through the end of the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. Um, a million seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in rental assistance. And without a doubt, that not only keeps housing uh stable, it keeps people housed. But it's also a trickle-down effect to the community. We know that when we can keep people housed, they rely less on social services. So we, we really think that's an important factor for the city of Pueblo. Looking at zip codes, um, eight one, eight one oh oh four, eight one oh oh one and eight one oh oh three are the highest used zip codes with about nineteen percent uh in um oh five and then sixteen percent of the cases in eight one oh oh eight. A few from the county, but not that many. This is what we've learned after two years. Uh, we have to be onsite and we have to be accessible. We have to make sure that people show up so we can help them. We have to continue to do the outreach to the landlords and the landlord attorneys so they know that uh we understand and we want to work with them. Come to the table. We understand your position. Many of them are mom and pop um landlords in Pueblo and they need the money. We know that mediation works and we'd like to do more of it. We'd like the court to allow more of it. Uh, when we can negotiate a, a stipulation, both sides get something out of it and the ability to stay housed increases. We're doing stakeholder meetings. Judge Silva is the county court judge. He's done two and he's going to do another one. We bring everybody to the table and he facilitates that meeting. Uh, the landlord attorneys, not only from Pueblo, but we work with many of the Denver landlord attorneys as well. The eviction defense attorneys, we invite the rental associations and the court personnel. So everybody understands what the program is, how it operates and how to get people to us. Uh, going forward, you know that the state law has changed and so he's going to start explaining what that state law means to both the landlords and the tenants, so we can all be on the same page. Um, successful mediation, that's the key. We want to keep people out of court. And we know that these wraparound services are very important, that eviction's the end result. But we have to look at all the pain points in the whole person and, and how they ended up in the eviction court. And then we need a direct and dedicated line. We need people to be able to get to us and not to have to tell their story three or four times uh and understand how they can get assistance um and legal assistance, most importantly. This is what we worry about tomorrow. We always worry about staffing. We need to keep our attorneys in place. Um, insufficient rental assistance. We're not quite sure what's going to happen when the ERAP winds down and how the state's going to replace some of that money and what that will mean for Pueblo and our share of the state money. And then affordable housing, um, we know that that's an issue. The affordable housing um is something that we've been dealing with uh before the pandemic and now it's a major issue um statewide, nationwide, but especially in Pueblo County. We also know that many of the clients that we see, the tenants are paying seventy to eighty percent of their income in rent. They don't have anything left, uh, no discretionary income. So that means they're one paycheck off the street or if their car breaks down, that will put them into the eviction process. If they have an illness or death in the family, that's another factor we hear about all the time. And that puts them into the, to the fast-moving eviction process. Because they're paying so much of their income, they don't have the ability to find more affordable housing. They can't save for the first and last month's rent. Nor can they uh come up with a deposit. So that's a challenge that we see. And then the application fees. Every time they apply, they pay an application fee. There are some now that will uh take one application fee that applies to all of their properties, but very, very few. So that's a challenge as well for people trying to find more affordable housing. There's always real people behind these numbers and there's real stories and we see them every day. Um, and it's, these are members of our community and we want to make sure that we can stabilize housing. And we want to make sure that we can stabilize housing, that we can help prevent homelessness. But also, we need to look to the future of our children involved in this eviction process. And then, I believe you know this, but thank you, Pueblo. Pueblo's the groundbreaker, the first county in Colorado to establish a coordinated eviction diversion housing stability model. There are other counties that are now putting together their own program, a program up north. Colorado Springs is looking at the same type of program. And this was one of four in Colorado that was mentioned in the U.S. Treasury report. So it's a very important program. And kudos to Pueblo for being forward-thinking and trying to solve the problem of keeping people housed. Thank you, thank you so much for inviting me, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Thank you, Gail. Counselor Gomez.
Yeah, Gail, I'm just curious, in reference, you had mentioned way earlier the redundancy of possible services. Do you have any idea whether other agencies are providing similar services to Colorado legal?
So we're the only program that, that provides legal services. But there are other good programs out there that, that tries to house as well. You know, Passada has their place in it, and we use those resources. There are other programs, Mount Carmel, that will help the vets, and those type of services, and they're out there, and they do a really, really good job. But what we wanted was a coordinated service to use those services that are in place, but also to provide the legal piece, to level the playing ground, actually, in the court for tenants and landlords.
Can you give me an idea, in reference, you talked about wraparound services? Can you give me an idea of what you're talking about?
Uh huh. So wraparound services or holistic services. We wanted to put onsite at the court that DHS navigator. And what she or he can do is they can access real services. For instance, I, we would have a family come in, and they may say, well, I'm taking, you know, I can't work, because I'm taking care of a family member, or I have a disabled child. And that navigator then can see if she might be eligible, or how to apply for caretaker services. We have many seniors who come in who don't know how to access services, whether it be healthcare, or food stamps, or other services that they might be eligible for. So that person onsite can do it then. That, too, is a cumbersome application process. That's been very important. The attorneys, and then the mediators. The mediators onsite to actually work on the agreements before it gets to the point where that writ of restitution enters, and the people are evicted. So holistic.
Any more questions? First, someone to receive services, Gail. What, what do they need to do?
So, good question. They need to contact Colorado Legal Services. They must qualify for Colorado Legal Services, both for our program and for the rental assistance. So for the local funding and Colorado Legal Services, they must be within 125% of the FPG, but we can make exceptions up to 200%, and it's the same for the local funding. ERAP can go up to 80% of the AMI for Pueblo County. However, we're not able to represent those tenants. We are really providing service to low-income and vulnerable community members in Pueblo County.
Okay, do you have any repeat clients?
Yes, we do get repeats. Not as many as we were getting, because I think in the beginning, after the pandemic, everybody believed that there was rental assistance available. And so we did see repeats, but now we know, and they know, that that's not possible. So we will look at repeats, because sometimes they have a really good reason why they're back. And stabilizing one more time will allow them to go forward. Sometimes we're not able to help those who come back for repeats, repeats services. If they do, we'll give them all the resources that we can, and we'll direct them to the state rental assistance program. But the states, now their guidelines are that if you've had assistance in the 12, in the last 12 months, you're not eligible. And it's the same thing for CSBG and CDBG.
Okay. And what is? Oh, darn it, I lost it. I waited for you to finish your sentence.
I do that all the time.
Okay, any more questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you so much.
Next on our agenda, last on our agenda, actually, for guests, we have the Humane Society of the Pike's Peak Region in Pueblo. And we have the president, Dwayne Adams, Director of Shelter Operations, Arena, and Stephanie Garcia, the Animal Law Enforcement Lieutenant, and welcome this evening.
Good mornings, or good evening, City Council. Thanks for having us today. We would like to give a quick update on how things have been going with our operations before we dive into Dwayne, introducing Dwayne to talk more about our 2024 budget. So my name's Erin Avandusen. I am the Director of Shelter Operations for the Pueblo Campus at the Humane Society of the Pike's Peak Region. And I'm going to kick this off by jumping right into our favorite thing, which is statistics. On the left part of the slide, I have our 2022 statistics for animal sheltering. And on the right side, we have the 2023. The biggest thing that I'd like to call out here is that we saw another year where we had an additional 1,000 animals come into care. The difference from 2022 to 2023 was primarily dogs this time. Another thing that I'd like to call out, when we look at our sheltering statistics, is that we are very much on track with having high rates for return-to-owners, adoptions, and transfers to other facilities for animals that we could not rehome here in Pueblo. So despite we saw an additional 1,000 animals come into care in another year, we were able to do, rehome a significant portion of those animals. I think it's important also to look, since we have completed the first quarter of 2024, to be able to take a look at where we are trending for this year compared to 2023. And we have taken in over 250 more animals this year than the first quarter of last year. So we are on track for another 1,000 animals to come into care in 2024 that we saw in 2023. And those that have seen several of our presentations know that last year, we were talking about 1,000 animal increase from 2021 to 2022. So the animals in need of care is not stabilizing in Pueblo. Before I wrap up talking about shelter operations, I think it's really important to bring front and center the work that we're doing through our wellness clinic for our community. So we've talked to many individuals with City Council and the mayor's office about the needs of the animals in Pueblo, and that we feel strongly that spay and neuter and preventative care is the solution. So I wanted to share our statistics for the animals that we've been able to care for in 2023. We're really proud that through that little wellness clinic out of the PetSmart, we have treated over 4,000 animals in 2023. So at this point, I will go ahead and hand it over to Lieutenant Garcia to talk about our animal law enforcement updates.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Same thing, like as Erin reviewed, I wanted to provide our year-over-year stats last year and year prior, 2022. Although we did have a overall decline in calls for service, the, again, the call natures and our call types of calls that were handled are much more time-consuming, and the multiple follow-ups that are needed for the mistreatment neglect cases continue to rise. We've continued to see it, you know, an increase in the injured and ill animals that are impounded in the field. And like we've spoke prior, the access to veterinary care, and the fact that the animals are being transported to Colorado Springs to receive care. Those veterinary transports are really important. You can note that the injured animal calls were, were identical 2022 to 2023. And the, I guess, the behind-the-scenes, those transport, those veterinary transports continue to rise. And so far this quarter, we've seen an increase in calls for service, to include our cruelty investigations and another number of our most common call types, which are listed here, our dangerous animal calls, our animal, aggressive animal at large, and dangerous animal investigations, and just overall animal at large, which impacts the overall impounds at the shelter. And if any of you have any questions, that is it for our animal law enforcement update, and I'll allow Dwayne to step in my place.
Sure. Counselor Martinez.
These stats always make me so sad, Stephanie. So one of the things that I've run into recently is that on a weekend, I'll try and call, or like, you know, in like, after the law enforcement number stops operating, I'll try and make a call, and of course, then it's closed. You know what I mean? Like, so, because there's only a certain number of hours that the, that you guys are operating. What do we do if you guys are, if it's after hours?
So after hours, so our, we have a dedicated dispatch and call center for animal law enforcement. They run up until, well, currently, 9:00 p.m. So after that cuts off, you would have to contact Pueblo Police Department. And after 9:00 p.m., our animal law enforcement officers respond to emergency calls only, and we're dispatched by the Pueblo Police Department.
Okay.
So if it's not an emergency, then it would have to wait until the next day to reach an officer.
And remind me of the time again, so it's, is it 8:00?
8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Okay.
Monday through Saturday, and then Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
And I know that you guys are pretty prompt in responding to those call logs. What's your average response time now?
Oh, I wish I would have brought in that information. I don't want to give you misinformation, but I feel like our response times are pretty average for, for, I guess, emergency responders. We typically, depending on any given day, have four officers on shift. So depending on, in their, they're kind of grouped within the county. We have it separated by like GO, and they're assigned each kind of an area. So I don't have the exact numbers, but I can get that information to you.
I just know that you guys are pretty prompt. So that's been good. Do we have the number for animal law enforcement on the city's website? We should have that there. If we don't have that, can we add it to that? Because I always, I always look up HSPPR, and then I go down a rabbit hole of like Pike's Peak versus Pueblo, and it would be good just to have the number on the website.
That'd be great.
Counselor Gomez.
What's the current budget that we, you provided services? What's the amount every, every year?
And, and we actually do have probably 75% of our presentation left to give regarding the budget. So if it's all right, we can introduce Dwayne, unless there's any more immediate questions before we introduce Dwayne to complete the presentation.
How many officers do you have that are employed from Pueblo?
Officers?
Correct.
We have currently, our animal law enforcement team is made up of 11 officers, including a lieutenant and an admin position.
Is this in Pueblo?
Yes, and currently, our officers employed, and we just go over them. All of them are either residents of the city of Pueblo or county of Pueblo.
And how many, you said you had the, some animals transferred to what facilities that they transferred to?
We partner with any PACFA-certified animal welfare organization in Colorado. So primarily, it's to our Colorado Springs location. But we do partner with Foothills and Boulder and organizations in Denver and various rescues in order to rehome the animals that are coming into care.
I was in law enforcement quite a while, and I was just curious. What happens if you have an officer that has a dangerous dog, and it's after hours? And short of putting the dog down, what's the alternatives, I mean, for law enforcement?
So our officers respond to, you know, calls similar to that after hours. And I mean, they're trained to be able to handle those animals and impound them safely without incident, you know, to themselves or to the animal. And, you know, we rely a lot on our local law enforcement in the event. You know, our officers respond alone. And if they need assistance out in the field after hours, they're really relying on local law enforcement for assistance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Latino? Oh, you don't have anything?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right. Dwayne, you're next. Thank you, Stefan.
Thank you, City Council, for giving me an opportunity to speak with you today. First off, let me talk a little bit briefly about HSPPR. For any of you that, that aren't aware of our organization, we are the Humane Society Pike's Peak Region. This is our vision, our mission. We offer four key programs. That's animal sheltering, animal law enforcement, community pet services, youth education. And we have been serving the Pueblo community since 2002, with a little short break there in 2019. Back last year, in 2023, when we submitted the budgetary needs for operating your shelter here in Pueblo, this is what was presented to the City Council, and this was presented to the mayor, and then we presented this to the City Council in October. And after that, what happened was that the, we're a year and a half into a three-year contract with you in the, in the county. It's a joint venture, so the city pays about 60% of the contract, and the county pays 40%. So it, it's, it's interesting, when you look back at these numbers, you can see that there's, the total for the contract was 3.4 million, and that was split up by 60% to the city, 40% to the county. The contract that we're currently in was started in 2023. It established a base amount, and it established a 3% escalation for each year, based on the effect of rising costs and inflation. It was in no way meant to cover any increases in services. And had our services remained flat, it would be perfectly fine. But as you've seen, and you've heard from us multiple times since we've been here, our, our work has not remained flat. The Pueblo community is struggling with animal overpopulation. The fact that Erin reported to you of 26, you know, it's been sitting around, anywhere between 25 and 30% of the animals coming to the shelter are needing to be transferred out of the community. We are seeing unprecedented numbers coming into the shelter. Since establishing our base amount, we have seen an increase of 11.6% in shelter costs to deal with that, and 8.3% of animals entering the shelter. Also, a 13% increase in field expenses, with a 19.3% increase in calls for service. This gives you a little bit of a recap. And I do apologize, if you're trying to follow all the numbers, it starts to get a little bit, I'll just say, wonky. That is because the way we figure out the budget, what we submit to you, and what we will be submitting to you next month for our 2025 projection of costs, what we have to do is we have to go back to the previous 12 months. So we're looking at anything from June of 2023 through May of 2024. And we're looking at what the numbers are. We look at the scope of the contract, and we're seeing, are these numbers going up? Are they coming down? What's happening there? So that's why you oftentimes will see the numbers that may be reflected, like when you look up here, these intakes going up, and the ALE calls going up significantly. They don't align with what, what Erin or Stephanie had reported. That's because they were looking at calendar year. That's the, the difference of those. So talk briefly about what we are seeing here, and why we have such concerns about the contract not being fully funded, which, by the way, the, the contract, had it been what we requested, it would have been about $252,000 more than it currently is. What we are being funded is the base amount plus the 3%, which puts us at the 1.7% as opposed to what we'd requested, which was the $2,47,150. What is driving that is animal intakes. And I feel like a broken record, sitting here talking about the community struggling and the increase we're seeing in the animals, but it is, it is real. We've seen an 80- It is real. We've seen an eighty-seven percent increase in animals coming to the shelter since two thousand and twenty. Just from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three, there's a fourteen percent increase, a thousand animals. These are huge numbers. These, these numbers are straining our system, they're straining our programs and they are certainly straining your facility. We're currently looking at, we're just completing the facility, facility needs assessment from Animal Arts. They'll be coming in to present to you their findings. A lot of what is driving this is trying to project out what's going on. We, we had years and years of de- decreasing numbers of animals coming to the shelter. And we've seen this turnaround and it's going up now. If that continues to happen, the shelter is going to have to get a lot larger and our staff is going to have to get a lot larger. We're going to have to find alternate placements for these animals. There's more animals than the community can adopt and so forth. The good news is there are things being made. We do know what we need to do to get in front of this and that is increase services to the community. We need to substantially. Increase spay neuter services. To our community. We have been. We, we're doing our part with the T N R program through the shelter. We have our wellness clinic over at the Pet Smart. And we have just now opened that up to start doing, beginning of the year, started doing cat spay neuter over there. And we do plan to open that up to doing small dog. We love to do all dogs, but we don't have the physical space to do large dogs. But smaller dogs, future Chihuahua lovers out there, we're going to be able to help you out. For the big dogs, you know, we, we still have some services here in the community, but we need to expand those. Basically, the reason I'm here today is to talk to you is make you aware of the fact that. The, the requirements, the needs that we submitted somehow did not make it into the budget. They end up being about two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars short of what we projected we would need. We're doing all we can to make up that difference by reaching out to the community, soliciting volunteers, volunteers help reduce our costs. We're trying to ramp up everything we can do in licensing and, and other things, but it's too big of a deficit for us to just take on. Without reducing programs and this is not the time to reduce programs to this community when it comes to the animal welfare. So, questions?
Uh, Counselor Gomez.
So if I got this right, you said eighty-seven percent increase.
Since twenty twenty.
Excuse me?
Since twenty twenty, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three.
Right, so that leaves seventy-three percent if you take the fourteen percent and subtract it. So that means thirty-five percent. Between those two. Prior years, because you jumped around awful fast and it's hard to digest the numbers. I mean, really hard. So I'm trying to understand an eighty-seven percent increase from twenty twenty-three, correct?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty to twenty twenty, twenty-three years.
Correct.
And you said you had a fourteen percent this or last year or, or part of this year?
No.
I was in follow-up.
I'm sorry, the fourteen percent increase I said was from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. That was for sheltering only. If you go back on the slides to Arina's.
Okay.
Slide, let me just go back there real quick for you. When you look at this, you see that there was actually a twenty percent increase. In animals in need of care. That's a different category. What, what I'm talking about is dogs and cats that enter the shelter for sheltering. When she's reporting on that twenty percent, that is including T N R services and end of life services. Those are services and programs we offer at the shelter. They are outside the contract. They're not part of the scope of the contract. But they are important services for the community. So when you look at her numbers, you see that it was fourteen hundred and sixty-seven. Increase from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. My numbers are specifically talking about the contract. It's called, the scope of service call out in the contract, which is sheltering of. Owners surrendered and stray animals.
Do you understand why that's a little hard for us to digest up here?
I completely understand. I, I live in this world every day and I sometimes get a little cross-eyed looking at all this, but.
Do you have a working relationship with the Paws in, uh, uh, foundation here in town? Pueblo animal. Welfare of the.
Pause for life?
Yes.
Yes, we do. We have a good relationship with them.
Okay, and these issues, do you work together or is there times that you have to work or don't work together?
Well, I, you know, that. They have a, they have a different mission and a, and a different model. So, so for them, uh, they can say, I'm sorry, we're full. And stop taking in animals. The most ways that we've been collaborating recently is that people will reach out to them for help. And they'll still recommend them to us. The animal will come into our care and then they'll reach out and say, if you can't rehome this animal, let us know. And we do. So, um, most times we can rehome the animals, so we do. But if there is a time where we find that they, they aren't eligible for adoption program, we will absolutely transfer the deposit for life for that specialized adoption program.
I have one last difficult question. You euthanize the animals, what, at what rate or how many do you have to put down every year?
We euthanize an animal if it's a compromised quality of life or if it's a danger to the community, anything else, we're going to. Provide the care, which again is outside the scope of the contract. So we're maintaining right at a ninety percent placement rate on all animals. If we were not to provide these programs and services out on top of the contract, I, I don't even want to think about what it would be.
What, what kind of numbers are we talking about though, specifically?
Uh, what is?
How many animals are?
Well, you consider that twenty-five percent of them are transferred out, uh, the ju- I wouldn't say majority, but many of those are transferred. Up to our Colorado Springs Shelter because they need extensive medical care, which we cannot provide down here. If you've been to the shelter, you've seen we have a very nice clinic there, but it is very small, can do spay neuter and that's about it. So if it's medical needs outside of that, it goes up to Colorado Springs. If it's emergency care, the veterinarians in the community are not open overnight. So. As Stephanie mentioned about us responding at, for emergencies after hours. Many times our officers have to drive those animals up to Colorado Springs for the emergency care.
Is Paws a no kill shelter? Do you know? I don't, I'm not really clear.
Pardon?
They do have that on their website, yes.
So there are no kill shelter?
That's what they advertise.
Oh, pause?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, um, Councilman Gomez, I'd be happy to schedule some time with you too to go over our reporting so that you can have those hard numbers that you're looking for.
Great, forward to it. Thank you.
Hi, Counselor Latino.
I, I spent time with you folks earlier in the year and it was very rewarding to me. To. Get the dynamics of, of the operation itself and what you're doing. Obviously you have a full plate. My, my, my concern also has to do with, how many animals are you getting? Off the street?
Let me go back to the first slide because I think that can be answered through our stray intake.
I guess, I guess. I'll put it this way. Do you get a lot of animals from the homeless that they're abandoning?
That's a hard thing to track. Because animals that come into care that come in as strays, we don't know the owners, so we don't know the circumstances of where they came from.
I, I would point out, um, or we have an extremely high return to owner rate for dogs here in this community. What, what are they currently at?
For dogs and cats, it's a thirty-five percent. For dogs, I believe it's, um, I, I'd have to look it up.
It usually sits right around sixty percent, so. We may not know where they came from when they come in the door, but when they return to their owner, we, we know.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor, uh, President Aguilera?
Hey, thank you. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
I want to get back to what I take that this meeting was completely about. And that was the two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars that was, was supposed to be budgeted in two thousand and twenty-three. For two thousand and twenty-four.
Correct.
That's funny way to put it, but in two thousand and twenty-three for the twenty-four budget, you had asked for that two hundred and fifty-two thousand. And they kept it at the old contractual rate. Is that correct?
Correct.
But you stated in your presentation that contractually we were obligated to the two hundred and fifty-two thousand. Was that? Or did I hear that wrong?
No, not, not entirely. When we established the base contract in two thousand and twenty-three, it was made clear that that would be the base number. And it would escalate each year at three percent to cover the cost of living increases. Uh, the then city attorney we spoke with, as, as I explained to him, well, that will work as long as the work doesn't change. If the scope of service rises, we're obviously going to need to modify this in regard to that. And he had let me know, yes, we'll understand that. And if, if this goes outside of that, you're going to need to come back to city council and present his. Explanation as to why it's increasing more than the three percent. And so that's what we did in, in October. Councilman, member Martinez, maybe remember, and Mr. Flores, you may remember, we were here and, and. Explained all of that and showed the increases that we are seeing.
So I'm to assume that city council just decided not to give the two hundred and fifty-two thousand? Is that how it happened?
Yeah, I think, uh, what the previous administration did was just the contractual plus the three percent, about one point seven million.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Flores?
You know, as, uh, as we look at all these statistics and, um. And you look at the increase and the work that, um, you, you have to do, uh, just because of the increase. In animal population, mostly dogs. Uh, it seems like it also creates an opportunity for the city. And, uh, in, uh, because either we pay you or, uh, we, we start reducing these numbers. And the only way that we can reduce them is through education, the spay and neuter program. You very seldom see anything out there, uh, whether it's in our newspaper or social media or. Uh, on our own cable channel, uh, or even announcements, public announcements where. Uh, we are telling the public they've got to get this done. And I'm curious, if, if you were to look at other cities that you work in. Are there any effective, uh, marketing advertisements or things that they're doing? Are they providing vouchers? The, the city government providing vouchers to the public to get this done? Because if we don't, if we, that, that's, uh, a way of getting our costs down as a community too. If, if everything had stayed level, you wouldn't be here, uh, asking for this additional amount. But when you're looking at a, an additional thousand to twelve hundred animals, uh, I can see why that's overwhelming. But can you speak a little bit about. Engaging the community in this discussion and how serious it is? And maybe sometimes it might be that they can't afford it or whatever, but there's always excuses, uh, with people.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. Um, you know. Animal welfare throughout the country, we were in a very different place prior to COVID and they're really. You're never supposed to say this without knocking on something, but overpopulation when it came to dogs was really done. Here in Colorado, we were transferring in forty thousand dogs. Just to meet the demand because we had more of a demand in people looking for dogs than we were actually producing, which was a wonderful thing. We were able to help other states out that weren't in that same position. And through that, as, as we've got better and better and better, we, we started moving on to talking about other things and we really quit focusing. Education efforts on responsible pet ownership and spay neuter. Uh, if you remember back, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, it was spay neuter, spay neuter, spay neuter. And we really started diverting resources to other educational things because, yeah, it really wasn't, spay neuter was still important. But it wasn't as important. We've got to get back to that. Um, other communities. That we work in, we're not seeing these kind of increases anywhere else. So I can't really speak to that. I think. It speaks a lot to accessibility of spay neuter in our community here in Pueblo. It speaks to, do we need to educate people that there is a serious overpopulation problem? There, there, yes, there, there needs to be some type of a call to action. An alarm bell goes off, you know, we, we keep saying it that this is the third busiest shelter in all of Colorado, right here. It is by far not the third largest. Um, and we can fix this. We know what we need to do. We need to get. People educated about spay neuter and we need to provide accessibility to spay neuter and that's the bigger challenge here. Our veterinary teams here are doing amazing work, but there's not enough of them and they're strained. We need to bring more resources in, which we can do. With mobile units and other things, but all of that takes funding, but, but Councilman Flores, you're absolutely right. We want to see these numbers coming down. We want to see the city and the county paying less in a contract. Because we're seeing a significant fewer animals coming into the shelter. Now the shelter is all of a sudden size-wise compatible with what it needs to be. Everybody wins.
And you are, uh, in most cases, uh, because of your relationship with all the other. Entities in Colorado, you're able to ship, uh, not, not the majority, but a certain percentage. Of animals from Pueblo to those areas and then they probably are getting them adopted, which is a good thing. But, uh, I think, I think one of the values that you bring is those relationships that you have with the other shelters throughout the state. Uh, which really is an outlet for us at this point, but we, we need to stop the bleeding here in our community. Uh, by taking the spay and neuter, uh, discussion and becoming serious about that and start. Uh, looking at marketing that, because we either do it there or, you know, if you keep increasing, we're going to have to pay you for that.
And, and just to stress what, what Duane said, um, marketing is very important, but we have a lot of community members. That are eager to get their large breed dogs spayed and neutered right now. And if they're waiting six, eight months because of accessibility to spay neuter. It becomes challenging to, to initiate a marketing strategy without the ability to, um, handle the need.
Okay, um, what is the most common reason for surrendering?
The most common reason people say or what we know.
Yeah.
Very different. You know, we, we've been partnering with U C C S and, and they, they did a little deep dive into. Our data on surrender and we, we also partnered with, uh, we had an intern from C S U that, that really took a deep dive here in Pueblo. And it was interesting that you, one of the most impactful things we can do is, um, provide, um, pet food bank. To help people with, uh, afford to keep their pets. Fortunately, there are really good, we have really good resources and programs for that. So there's a little bit of a disconnect there. And we think that that's more along the lines of the education and awareness and getting that word out. So we'll be working on that piece. As far as the number one reason, um, it's by far behavior on dogs. Actually, it's, it's number one on, on dogs and cats is behavior, but.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for your time and, oh, go ahead.
If it's all right, can I ask a question of city council?
Yes.
What are the next steps for the request for, um, the two thousand and twenty-four budget?
And the mayor, she.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I, I was on vacation for two weeks. We've already discussed this. Thank you.
So a couple of things, I think that the council needs to give some direction tonight for the two hundred and fifty-two thousand for the two thousand and twenty-three. Budget ask for two thousand and twenty-four, that's essentially I know why they're here tonight presenting to the council, if that's something that the council wants to entertain. And then I could think my question, um, to the two of you that will also help with some clarification moving forward is. Because you're preparing your budget asks for two thousand and twenty-five, could you give the council some perspective into what that? Is there going to be an additional ask to that budget? Um, and what you're seeing over the, what you've seen over the last twelve months moving forward?
Yes, thank, thank you for that question because that, that is something we're looking at saying, okay, we're, here's where we are now and when we got two thousand and twenty-five, which is increasing. Unfortunately, then the numbers for this quarter in two thousand and twenty-four are not coming down where we want to see them. We're looking at a couple of different things. There will be an increase over the three percent. I, I can pretty much guarantee you that. I don't know what that increase will be yet, um, but we will get that to you as soon as possible. I, I believe we have to get in by June thirtieth.
That's, that's right. So do you have any kind of indication of those? Numbers, because your three percent increase is about fifty-three thousand dollars. But if the ask last year was an additional two hundred and fifty-two thousand because the three percent isn't enough, I think it would. Do the conversation just if you had an, a, about, you know, are, are you looking at an additional two fifty-two? For two thousand and twenty-five or what is this a one-time, you know, addition or what is that ask to the council going to be?
I, I would really rather not say right now. Uh, I don't have a clear idea, but I'd be more than happy to meet with you and go over with. What, what we're working on as far as trying to reduce the, the cost and exposure to the city for the two thousand and twenty-five contract. There, there are some things and I, I mentioned a couple of those, like looking to increase our volunteer support and other things, but happy to meet with you and go over that.
So my office just needs clarification on the two fifty-two from the two thousand and twenty-three to the two thousand and twenty-four, if that's something council wants to entertain.
We already approved the budget for two thousand and twenty-four.
You did, so it'd have to come out of fund balance for the additional two fifty-two, if that's something that you want to do.
Can we, uh, can we defer to this discussion? It just seems like we shouldn't be negotiating. Uh, a number right now, uh, without having. It just seems like we shouldn't be negotiating uh, a number right now uh, without having um, us absorb all of these numbers and I'd like to look at the contract too myself.
Um, President Aleph has a question.
One quick question is, the two hundred and fifty two thousand was a shortfall that would have been due from the partners. So that means that the county would have been due. I mean, they should have been on the hook for forty percent of the two fifty two, right?
And no, they, no, my, yeah, it is still up there. Let me go back. Let me show you. Um, their portion of the contract would have went to one point three. Yours would have went to two million forty seven, which is two hundred and fifty two thousand less than what it is.
I got it.
And then the theirs was one point three. They ended up in the same boat because they pay off of the contract that comes from the city. We did go back and speak to the county and they have increased their amount for this year.
They have.
They they have increased it. They did not increase it to the full amount of the one point three.
They gave you a portion of it.
Portion of it.
And what was their portion?
Uh, thirty percent.
Okay. So they gave you thirty percent of what you had asked.
They were short about, in in rough numbers, their their contract was short about a hundred and fifty thousand and they ended up increasing by fifty thousand.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, yes, Councilor Gomez.
Is there an occasion where you have to utilize offices in Colorado Springs to patrol Pueblo?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so I guess council, I think we're a little taken aback by trying to fulfill a budget need for twenty twenty four. Um, halfway through twenty twenty four, this isn't, um, I haven't seen us do business like this in the past, but um, I guess. Well, I'm not finished.
I'm sorry.
Okay. So I guess um, you would like to wait, counselor?
Well, I I
Flores?
I don't like the idea that we're trying to negotiate uh, in this work session, in this fashion. I think we need to absorb these numbers and maybe get back to the mayor uh, directly uh, with our thoughts on this. Um, or if, you know, if we want to have a full blown uh, meeting on it.
Who wants, who would like to wait?
Specifically are you asking for, man? Just you said you wanted direct.
So they've come tonight to talk about the difference in their ask that they asked the previous council for the twenty twenty four budget and what was budgeted per their contract. And the additional amount would be two hundred and fifty two thousand dollars. So if that's something that the council would like to give, then we need to prepare an ordinance from fund balance for the two hundred and fifty two thousand. So I don't know if you want to have an additional work session. I think that that was kind of what they came tonight to present was the ask. I don't know if the council needs more time. Um, but we're happy to prepare the ordinance if the council wants to give the two fifty two. The dollar amount isn't changing. Um, there, so there is no negotiations. That that was their, that was their original ask.
Well, you were on the budget committee and you did recommendations on what you felt should have, you know, where we should raise or take away on the budget. And I don't recall you making the recommendation for this.
Anything that was contractual, we did what the contractual amount was. So it's up to this council now if they want to approve the two fifty two or if they don't.
Well, it does, it doesn't.
Okay.
It it doesn't have to be two hundred and fifty two.
No.
The ask is for two hundred and fifty two.
Correct.
So I mean, I think we can absorb all these numbers. And then if somebody wants to come forward with a recommendation at a work session, hey, let's talk about this, that uh, we can move forward with that and we could do an ordinance at any time to make that happen. I mean, I I think that there's some responsibility here as a community uh, to to do something. I mean, they came to city council in good faith. They asked for two hundred and fifty two thousand. They clearly showed the need and the evidence uh, that that it was needed. I'm just saying that as the council, we have to look at the fact that we don't have any money and that we have thirteen million dollars in the hole and in i- in our budget when we, not we, when the, when city council started. So I think we have to have that conversation of, is this something that uh, where would the money come from? How much would it be? And what is everybody comfortable with to make that happen? And and just getting the numbers and the and the ask is probably not going to happen tonight. And I think that's all you're asking for.
Maybe even at their next work session.
Yeah.
In a week.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be drug out from.
Yeah.
Months. Just give us a week.
I heard you come and talk about and ask that you didn't receive. I didn't hear you re-asking for a previous, the previous amount, but making us aware of the next year's budget since it's upcoming and that amount. So were you here tonight to specifically ask for um, two hundred and fifty two thousand? That was not, I didn't, I I'm sorry, I didn't hear it to, I didn't perceive it that way.
They asked nicely.
Should be more direct. Yes, we are here tonight to ask for the additional two hundred and fifty two thousand dollars to support the work we are doing this year in this community. Um, we've had conversations. I understand you've got a lot of budget implications and other things, and it may not be possible to get and find that amount. As I said, we are doing what we can to minimize costs and and other things. We do not want to go as far as reducing scope services or programs. Um, we feel very strongly that we need to be doubling down on these things right now in this community. So yeah, wha- whatever you could do would be greatly appreciated and we do need s- some help. That is polite with, they say that.
I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
Given us the evidence, so thank you.
All right.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Okay.
Kind of point of clarification then. So we're coming back next work session, talk about this again with more information about the finances. Is that what I'm hearing?
In the next two.
Mm-hmm. Yes, I'll have to look at that. Um, we'll have to add it here in the future, in the next couple of weeks. So I'll have to look at that.
Mayor Graham, does that satiate your concern?
There's another piece to this too, and that might be uh, since we're going to be tackling twenty twenty four for this ask, uh, we might as well look at twenty twenty five and maybe we can get an answer for both years. And that's what I was thinking about not having to negotiate here, but maybe looking long term also so that uh, we're not, we don't have a surprise in twenty twenty five. Um, so that's my thought and but we, I I need to absorb all these numbers and then get back to you.
Yes, I I I think I recall something at a previous council meeting, something about fifteen thousand dollars for, you had an ask for fifteen thou-, or you were talking about expanding the shelter itself?
Yes, the fifteen thousand dollar ask was for the needs assessment through Animal Arts that's wrapping up now.
Okay, and then you also talked about money, but it was for expanding the shelter and not necessarily to cover the shortfall of the twenty twenty four budget.
We we did present in October of two thousand twenty three e- explaining why we were going to ask for an additional amount in on top of the three percent. So so that was presented in October and then we weren't sure. And then we've been working since to understand why, you know, the three percent was what went through and and the considerations for for the resources needed for the additional animals coming into care.
Mm-hmm. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right.
Madam Chair, I move that we go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS section twenty four dash six dash four oh two, parent four, parent B. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. The resignation of Councilman Charles Hernandez. No adoption of any proposed policy, position, resolution, rule, regulation or formal action shall occur at any executive session that is not open to the public.
Second.
Um, can we take a?
All those in favor.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Did it say, take a break?
I was ready to.
I'm
It's May eighteenth and we, the time is seven forty six P M and we are adjourning the meeting.
Done.
Yeah. But every time you come.